I call this meeting to order. This is a commissioner meeting of September 27, 2023 at 6:00 PM at the Sussex County Administrative Center, the Commissioner Meeting Room on One Spring Street in Newton, New Jersey. Any roll call, please?
Director Carney?
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Space?
Here.
Deputy Director Yardley is absent.
We got a moment of silence and a salute to the flag, and a moment of silence will be for the soldiers who fell in Somalia.
Thirty years ago.
Thirty years ago. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number four is our public statement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975. Adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975 has been made by regular mail and email. Such notice being submitted on January 4, 2023, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: The New Jersey Herald and the Star-Ledger. It is also posted on a bulletin board, maintain an administrative center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices. Number five is the approval of the agenda, and we need to amend the agenda as follows. We need to move Item 14D to vote separately. Here I got that. All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Some move.
Commissioner Space, second by Commissioner Hayden. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. Number six, proclamation certificates, presentations. There are none. Number seven, public hearing, there is none. Number eight is our public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Motion to open the floor for public comment.
Some move.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, carries. The floor is open for anyone to make comments on agenda topics only.
Alan Henderson, Lafayette Township. I'm pleased to say I'm happy to see the agenda tonight that the black box finally made it back to a resolution. However, I'm very disappointed to see there's no mention of the gas tax or where it stood before about lowering the gas tax. That kind of bothers me to think that we're not even looking at the gas tax. And I know you're supporting Assemblyman Space's bill. I read that today, too. That's pretty generic. That's also not supporting the lowering of the gas tax or maintaining the gas tax where it is. Thank you.
Anyone else, agenda topics?
Peter Mauer is still order. My chair and I need the renovations of the dentist's office.
Thank you. Anyone else, agenda topics only, please. Okay, can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment?
Some move.
Commissioner Space, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, carries. Moving on, number nine is commissioners' comments. Commissioner Hayden, would you like to start?
Sure.
Thank you.
All my comments are regarding the library and upcoming events. The library system is hosting a series of educational and engaging programs. Year of Two is having celestial events, a solar eclipse October 14th and a full solar eclipse April 8, 2024. Last week, the library hosted Spots, the Sun Steam Program, which proved to be a hit amongst kids and families. The program featured informative discussions about the sun, sunspots, telescopes, and offered children an opportunity to create their own sun grass. So, solar eclipse viewing, imaging, and wonders of the universe, October 3 at the Dorothy Henry Branch in Vernon, and that's from 6 to 8:00 PM. Get ready for the eclipse, Louise Child's Branch, October 12, 3:30 to 4:30, 3:00 PM, solar standout. And then the kids eclipse viewing at the main library, October 14, at the main library at Morris Turnpike, 1:00 to 2:00 PM. Also, last Friday, we did have a meeting with the architect on the proposed design for the library, and I think we'll discuss that a little bit later. But we did have a meeting about costs, so that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Space?
Division of Health, Office of Public Health Nursing, flu vaccine clinics. Fall 2023 schedule, the Office of Public Health Nursing will be holding flu vaccine clinics at various locations throughout the county during October to best accommodate the needs of our residents. Registration is required. To schedule an appointment or obtain additional information, please call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1275, on Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM. Please visit the Public Health Nursing website at sussex nj.us backslash flu to view the 2023 fall flu vaccine schedule. Office of Public Health Nursing, a women's health clinic will be held on Thursday, October 12, 2023, from 4 to 7:00 PM at the Office of Public Health Nursing, 201 Wheatsworth Road in Hamburg. This clinic offers a variety of health screenings and education. This service is free to uninsured and underinsured county residents who qualify for the New Jersey Cancer Education and Early Detection Program. To make an appointment, call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570. Division of Senior Services, Center for Lifelong Learning at Sussex County Community College. The Division of Senior Services collaborates with the Sussex County Community College to offer educational presentations and classes to seniors through the Center for Lifelong Learning. The Center for Lifelong Learning is hosting a free music history presentation titled The Rock and Roll Music of Our Lives, Part II, in the atrium of the Performing Arts Center at SEC. On Friday, October 13, from 2:00 to 3:30, Professor Wendy Fulham introduced the first of this two-part series in the spring semester. Join Professor Fulham for Part Two, as she briefly reviews the history of rock and roll as it unfolded in the United States from the days before rock, pre-1955, and then jump forward to the 1970s, where the first presentation left off through the early 1980s. Pre-registration is required. To pre-register or obtain additional information, please contact the Division of Senior Services by calling 973-579-0555, extension 1277. I also attended a meeting last week with our Chief of Staff Christina Marks, and it was a PACC meeting, a post-acute care meeting, and it is with administrators and directors of nursing homes and long-term care facilities in Sussex and Warren. And they meet quarterly to discuss issues and brainstorm ideas as a group. And I feel it's important that the county hears their concerns and listen to their open dialogue and hear what's going on post-pandemic with these long-term care facilities so that we have a better understanding of what they've been through and what their challenges are moving forward. So, that's about it.
Thank you. Commissioner Fantasia?
Thank you. I'm going to keep the comments somewhat brief tonight because I have more commentary when we get to Resolution Z, but I'm going to discuss the updates from the Health Department. Most recent New Jersey Department of Health COVID-19 Activity Level Report indicates Sussex County and all counties in New Jersey are at a low level of COVID, with the exceptions of Atlantic and Cape May Counties, which are considered a medium level. In Sussex County, we're averaging about 12 or 13 cases a day that are reported to the Health Department. A lot of people are very concerned about hospitalization numbers, and we are still very low hospitalization numbers. You know, in August, we had nine, July 11, June 6, so it seems that those numbers are low. As of September 26, there have been five active outbreaks reported, one in a workplace, one in a school, and three in long-term care facilities. So that's really where the crux of our concern is, when these break out in long-term care facilities, along with RSV and influenza. As of right now, the only outbreaks are confirmed as COVID. There are no RSV or influenza A outbreaks reported anywhere in the county. Now, on to something a little more serious. I always give the updates for the Office of Mosquito Control, and as you know, Sussex County, we were kind of holding our own for a period of time there with nothing of note. But, you know, as the warmer weather happened, as the rains happened, we're seeing more and more cases of pools of water and pools of mosquitoes that are testing positive for disease. A total of 614 pools of adult mosquitoes have been submitted for testing, and since the beginning of August, 27 pools have tested positive for West Nile virus, one positive pool of Jamestown Canyon virus, and now one positive pool of La Crosse Incephalitis virus. That was just discovered in response to this new pool of La Crosse reported just this morning. Mosquito Control is conducting ULV truck-mounted spraying applications tonight, starting tonight, Wednesday, the 27th through Friday, September 29. We'll continue to monitor all areas in the county for mosquito-borne illness. So, in other words, as the rains keep coming, as the weather still can be warm during the days, please remove all standing water from your homes in and around your homes, if you have it, if you see any pools. If you have any areas around your home that you are particularly concerned about, please call the Office of Mosquito Control, and they will arrange to come out and assist you. Because again, we're seeing some diseases that we have not seen before here in Sussex County, and they are very, very serious. You can call 973-940-5225. You can also see the spraying schedule. Office of Mosquito Control has their own dedicated website, but also on our website, you can find the links to click, and you can see exactly what they're spraying, how often they're spraying, and where the different pools with the different disease pods are found. From September 1st to September 22nd, the office has completed 12 ULV truck and all-terrain applications for adult mosquitoes across 14 municipalities, and we expect that to continue into October until we get a handle on it. The Office of Mosquito Control is participating in HoopatCon Cleanup Day, Saturday, September 30, and this is held every year to promote a cleaner community and also reduce the risk of mosquito-borne disease. So anyhow, if you are in HoopatCon for Cleanup Day, just know our Office of Mosquito Control will be there. We had the pleasure of attending Sussex County Day, sponsored by the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce at the Fairgrounds, and I can say that's the largest group I think we've ever seen. I mean, the thousands of people were there throughout the course of the day. There were all different kinds of groups, vendors, food trucks, county services, we're all in one building, all different kinds of political and civic groups were there, and it was probably the best attendance I think we've ever had via the Chamber of Commerce. So it was a really good success, and I see a lot of faces out here in the crowd who were part of that day as well. So I want to thank you all for coming to that. It's a very different field than the fair, but it's wonderful nonetheless. Those are all my comments for now because I'm going to reserve the rest for Resolution Z.
Perfect. Thank you. I will be brief myself. Just a little update on River Sticks Bridge, just some completions. Some brush trimming was done, some curb repairs, and some basin repairs were done as well. There's some seats around. If you guys, there's a couple over here, if you just look around.
There's one here. Thank you.
This will continue. There's still sidewalk repairs, as I said, and some sweep, street sweeping as well. This is from the clerk's office. I just want to read some reports. The property alert system from August is 199 newly registered, and year-to-date is 529 people that have signed up for the property alert system. Daniels Law, in August, there was nine newly registered, and year-to-date is 470. As Commissioner Hayden said before him and I met with the architect on Friday, along with our administrator and our chief of staff, our facilities guy, man...
Can you speak up, please?
You're not hearing me? I'm sorry.
It's hard to hear.
I'm sorry. Our facilities manager and Will Porter, the librarian for our libraries, just to make sure we do our due diligence. So I'd like to take this moment to address the concerns regarding the dentist's library. I want to reassure everyone that there's no final decision regarding the current project. Meetings with various officials and professionals are ongoing, and once this entire board has been able to review all options, we will be in better position to advise everyone on the next steps the board intends to take. However, I will let everyone know that we are listening to your concerns. What you're saying is not falling on deaf ears, is basically what I'm saying. I'll bring that up. In all business, I just want to let all the commissioners know and everybody who's been coming to our meetings. The jail survey, the field work has been done, getting a little closer and closer. So we're going to have to sit down with Ron, myself, Facilities, to go over how we're going to subdivide that property, get the appraisal, and get rid of that building. Fleet has gotten their tools that we've been waiting for, for eight months probably, so they were very, very happy. I'm sure some of you guys got the pictures, so they're good and they're working on that. As Dawn said, we attended Sussex County Day, which was very, very nice, and I'm working with Tammy Horstfield next year to do a food drive there for Sussex County. I think we could bring in a lot of food there. I'm also working with Mike Richards to do a food drive at the fair as well. So with those two little entities, I think we could do a good job for our Sussex County Food Bench. And on the agenda, I'm sure you guys saw it, a resolution is to move the antenna from the jail to the courthouse, which expedites things as well. So hopefully this goes quicker than I would like to see it, which probably not going to happen, but at least we're heading in the right direction.
You've never sold a jail before, so it's new. We're breaking new ground.
If anybody out there knew, somebody who wants a jail, give me a call. All right, that's all we have for comments. Number 10 is the approval of the consent agenda. There is none. Number 11 is the approval of minutes. This is from our special meeting, September 6, 2023. This was the meeting that we were supposed to meet with Pope John, I think that was planned, and the regular meeting from September 13, 2023. Second motion to approve the minutes from regular and the special meetings.
Some move.
Commissioner Space, Commissioner Hayden, seconds. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, carries. Oppose appointments in or resignations? There are none. 13 is our resolutions. All right, can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through Z?
Some moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, can I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion?
Yes.
All right, you're up.
Resolution Z, support of Assembly Bill Number 5548 prohibiting the state from imposing a mileage-based user fee. This resolution tonight reflects a revision of the draft that I had submitted. I actually submitted two separate drafts in the spring, which did include, as the speaker had stated, specific references to the gas tax. Unfortunately, with the group here prior to the election, because it was prior to the primary election, the water was getting a little muddy with concerns from a couple of the commissioners who felt that it would make a stance either way on support of the gas tax or mislead that someone was either in support or in opposition to. So that piece was completely removed in order to gain a consensus with the board, that the whole board could agree that black boxes were bad per se. This is not supposed to be a political football or an issue used for grandstanding. It's supposed to be an issue that actually protects our Sussex County residents, and that's in the state I believe it's in. So I'm going to read this into the record for all to hear. Whereas on June 5, 2023, Assemblyman Parker Space introduced Assembly Bill Number 5548, and whereas Assembly Bill Number 5548 would prohibit the state from imposing a mileage-based user fee and prohibit the use of state funding for any program, study, or pilot program related to the imposition of a mileage-based user fee. And whereas mileage-based user fee means any fee imposed on the owner or operator of a motor vehicle, which fee is calculated based on the number of miles traveled by the motor vehicle during a designated period of time, and whereas the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners recognizes that our residents have some of the longest commuting times and distances in the state, and is extremely concerned that an imposition of a mileage-based user fee would have a negative effect on our residents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners supports Assembly Bill Number 5548, be it further resolved that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners opposes the imposition of any mileage-based user fee upon its residents, and be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to New Jersey Governor Phil Murphy at the State House, Senator Stephen O'Roh, Assemblyman Hal Wirths, Assemblyman Parker Space, and each municipality in the County of Sussex. And then all of the commissioner names. Now, some have asked the question, what happens then for electric vehicles? We know the state of New Jersey issues credits and different incentives to purchase an electric vehicle. We have people who are not paying at all, they're not buying gasoline, which means they're not funding the roads and the use on the roads. So, you know, Governor Murphy has often said he'd like to turn us into the California of the East Coast. Ironically, California was one of the very first states to charge an annual fee every time a California resident buys an electronic vehicle, that when they register the vehicle, there's a surcharge to cover the fact that they are not paying to help support the roads. There are multiple states across the country that charge anywhere from $50 to $200 at the time of registration. In New Jersey, I'm personally of the belief is to take away the incentives that we are giving for buying electric vehicles and parlay that money into repairing the roads as opposed to making it part of Governor Murphy's green energy hoopla that's supposed to happen and force us all to give up our gas vehicles, you know, by 2035. But I can only speak for myself in that regard. I think it's ridiculous and premature to push us to that level, especially considering Sussex County, again, has some of the longest commutes, many of us commute out of the county, and I think some of these incentives for electric vehicles only further hurt us, and our grid cannot support the number of vehicles that he is proposing. So this resolution opposes mileage-based user fees, trackers, black boxes, anything that's going to track our whereabouts or the number of miles we put on our cars.
Very good. All right, we'll need a motion to adopt resolutions A through Z.
Some move.
Commissioner Hayden?
Second.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. My bad. I apologize. Yep, roll call.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley is absent.
All right, 14 is awards of contract change orders and bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders and bids consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determined the adoption of said resolutions is and will further the public's interest. Motion to adopt Resolution A through C.
Some move.
Commissioner Space, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley is absent.
And we have Resolution D, which was cut out separately. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution D?
Some move.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second. I will second that. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll discuss. I just want to say the reason that I asked for this to be separated is because my day job is in tourism, and I do work a lot with the Chamber of Commerce, and I just felt it was best that I abstained, because I do work with the Chamber on a daily basis.
Okay.
For discussion?
For discussion, yes.
Is it possible that either you, Director, or Ron, explain, you know, for the benefit of the public, what the premise of this actual piece is?
Yeah, this was part of the original ARPA monies that were looked at to support tourism in the county, particularly post-COVID, and how to get businesses, particularly agricultural businesses, back up and running. Part of this, we went out for proposals to start the initial part of this, is training. It's a training activity that will come in and teach these agencies how to better market, how to get back on the marketing scheme, and how to better produce or promote their agencies. Post that, part of this is to help them with any technical assistance that they may have. If they want any startup on websites, or communications, or brochures, or marketing, or those types of things, this is funded to help support that as well. This is part of a two-tiered ARPA fund. It was another section of ARPA funding that was to fund the planning division to help support this as well, and their activities as a collaboration of both the professional training, and that's going to come through this, and the support staff that we have upstairs.
I'd like to add, in our meetings, in our commissioner meetings regarding ARPA, when we were in our subcommittees, there was quite a lot of discussions. That was quite a presentation that was shared with us about the need for support, specifically for agritourism and the loss of revenue that happened due to COVID, and that there were a lot of agriculture businesses that were floundering, looking for support. I just, again, we have a lot of these discussions, again, amongst us, and to reduce it to one sentence or two sentences for the public, I think it's important that we share why.
Okay, any more discussion on that? All right, roll call, then.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Abstain.
Deputy Director Yardley is absent.
All right, 15, financial. Our first resolution's from the payments of Bills List A, which was from September 27, 2023, and motion to pay the Bills List A.
Some move.
Commissioner Space, have a second, please.
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley is absent.
This resolution's the payment of Bills List B from September 27, 2023, and motion to pay the Bills List B.
Some move.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Abstain.
Deputy Director Yardley absent.
All right, 16, personnel, there is none. 17 is the admin report.
Thank you. Just real briefly, we had our third quarter safety meeting here two weeks ago, and we, again, we fared very well in our workers' compensation. Our general liability claims were all very in good, good shape. At the end of that meeting, though, they did indicate that everyone that's involved in the fund, all the members that are involved in the fund, will see a cost increase at the renewals. And our renewal, unfortunately, isn't just coming up. This is our last year till we renew. When you're in a JIF, there's a timeframe from where the, before you renew and before your contract's out, you have to send a letter of what we call reservation of rights if you want to leave your options open to have other JIFs or HIFs bid on our work. And that letter was sent this past week. And basically, it's due diligence, that we know we're going to get a cost increase, but I couldn't sit here in front of all of you and say, okay, that's just okay. We're leaving our options open so that if somebody wants to bid on our work, they can. But there's nothing wrong with statewide. We're very good. They're very good with us. They have great processes, no intentions to pull out of statewide. We're just, this was an intention to say we're going to make sure we do our due diligence. You may get a phone call from a statewide representative that might ask you, why did we send a reservation of rights letter? And that's why. We're just doing our, we're keeping our pencils sharp. No intentions to leave, no intentions of doing anything different, but we're going to, we're going to look at, we're going to open the books. And that's it.
Perfect. All right, county council.
Just our matter with regarding being and-over-subacute, and that document demands are still outstanding, we're waiting for a November 2 hearing, so let's see how we go with that.
November 2?
November 2.
All right, 19, unfinished business. I do have some, you know, I couldn't figure out what I was missing before, but we had our mayor's dinner last Wednesday, me and Commissioner Hayden went. We had Jacqueline Suarez, the director of the DLGS, and also the interim commissioner of the DCA, newly appointed, to come and basically let us know all the advantages of shared services available for the communities and our municipalities in the county. So that was a very good dinner. We had a lot of mayors attend. I think they got some good information, along with Lorraine Henz, she did our senior service presentation, so that went very, very well. I should have brought that up in my comments, but I brought it up now. As for the Sierra Club, we did not forget you. There's a draft letter that will be emailed to everyone, all the commissioners, before we send it out. I don't think anybody's here from the Sierra Club, but for those who come to our meetings, we do not forget. That's important, and we will be staying on that. meetings, we do not forget, that’s important, and we will be staying on that. All right, any new business?
I’d just like to bring something up.
Sure.
So, backing up what we did in Resolution D here, I know we do economic development through the Chamber, but as rateables are becoming thinner and we’re not bringing the money, I think we ought to do economic, or look into bringing economic development into accounting position. Talk to other people in other counties, and it might be something we ought to really start trying to push that.
As a position.
As a position. Correct.
Yep. Anybody else, new business? No? All right, 21, Public Session from the Floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and state your name, municipality for the record. Motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Space, Commissioner Hayden, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, carries. Anybody here for comments? Come on up, state your name and municipality, please.
Good evening, Dormine Edwards. Is this thing on?
What we want to do, we’re doing.
Eddie Hears.
Vernon.
Vernon. So if I heard you correctly, on non-agenda items, is that correct?
It was.
Okay. So, a few years back, I was here with a group saying that it’s very important that Sussex County keeps an eye on the numbers for Lyme disease and co-infections, and that number is continually going up every year exponentially. That’s a tough word to say, so if I mispronounce it, I’m sorry, but it’s over 450,000 folks in the United States alone that gets infected. I’m not saying everybody is on death row from it, but they’ve had that many infections. And just like the mosquitoes, to me, it could be worse than the mosquitoes because you can get so many different co-infections, to get a proper diagnosis from a physician or somebody is near impossible sometimes, and that’s why people with lungs get so frustrated, because it’s like, it’s in your head, you really don’t have this problem, maybe you have arthritis, when actually it’s a lot worse than that. So I just want to put that out there, I think the county should really step it up in regards to that particular disease, Lyme disease, and co-infections. And a lot of times, co-infections are worse than Lyme disease, there’s so many different types of infections you can get, and they mimic so many diseases, it’s like unreal. I mean, for instance, I had, when I first had it, I had it for about eight years and didn’t know, but I started getting heart palpitations, and I was too young to get that, nobody in my family had problems, so I’m like, what’s going on? It took over a year to try to figure out what was the problem, and from then, I had vertigo, and then I couldn’t see, I thought I was going blind, and from one thing to another, so education is key for people to know.
One minute, please.
Education is important, and I think that’s something maybe the county can do as well, to educate folks, you don’t always get the bullseye, so just something to be mindful about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carney, I have some information that I could share on that for an update.
Right now?
Yeah, it’s quick and simple.
Why don’t we read?
Okay.
Hi, Heather Cord for Wordiston. I just want to say thank you, you spent time explaining things at the Sussex County Day, which was excellent, and I hope everybody got to be there, because it really was a very good crowd. But I just want to let Ms. Fantasia know, I am not running for any, but I am questioning some of the things that are going on now, and I find it somewhat offensive, maybe that’s the wrong word, but I find it offensive that you think anybody that questions the freeholders, I’m sorry, the Commissioners, is grandstanding. I was here for that day, that that happened, and I understand that there’s a format, and we didn’t understand what the format was, I’m a novice at this, but you have now said today that, about grandstanding again. I don’t feel that it’s grandstanding when someone questions your motivations, or possibly your bills, or whatever. I just, as a taxpayer, it bothers me that you would see it in that manner. Second thing is the jail. You have to remove those tower antennas, that could be upwards of $500,000 to remove the antennas. I don’t know if it is or not, because I don’t know what you’re removing, but I do know antennas, because I’ve dealt. The jail also shares common space with the parking lot, and you’d have to give an easement over the parking lot to get to the jail. That involves the county maintaining that area for the easements, and isn’t that our parking garage, the county parking garage? So, if you sell the jail, they need to park in our parking garage, or parking garage, whatever. I don’t necessarily know, again, if that is financially responsible, because of all the money you’re going to have to invest in making sure the easement is done, the paperwork, and then the jail moving the antenna, and then also letting them use our facilities, because they will fill up our facilities, and the doctor’s offices in the front use those facilities, as well as the court.
One minute, please.
The court, and also the public, so it’s just a comment, that was.
Thank you. Anyone else? You could stand up, that’s fine, you don’t have to sit back down.
Good evening, my name is William McGovern, I live in Andover Township, together with my wife Janice, and this is the first opportunity I’ve been, I’ve had to be back in this room to address the Commissioners at the time, it was the Freeholders, some 20 years ago, so it’s been a 20-year gap, so maybe it’ll be another 20 years. I’m primarily here tonight because I’m interested in the Dennis Library situation, which is under your continued consideration. My wife and I sent a letter to the Commissioners earlier this week, hopefully it arrived by today, and it’s been distributed.
Yes, I actually have it right here.
I would ask for your time and attention to consider the thoughts that are expressed in that letter. Obviously, we took the time to be here tonight, I’m sure there are other people here who are similarly interested and invested in this issue, and I have very limited time here to talk to you, which is probably a good thing. With my background, I tend to talk too much, so I’ll keep it short. As a history major, I’m cursed with the understanding of what’s happened in centuries and millennia past, the Dark Ages, the end of the Roman Empire, libraries essentially didn’t exist, except in a few monasteries here and there throughout Western Europe. So, it’s an important issue to me, and it’s summarized succinctly among the many quotations I brought this evening, the one that stands out to me is the following by Walter Cronkite, who most of us will remember, anybody with a brain here anyway will remember Walter Cronkite, famous news correspondent and broadcaster, and he said, “Whatever the cost of our libraries, the price is cheap compared to that of an ignorant nation.” So. I humbly ask for your continued research, careful investigation of this issue, and to find a way to keep that beautiful historic building, which always reminds me when I start, I was there earlier this morning, it’s like a slice out of Colonial Williamsburg, it’s a beautiful building, it’s a beautiful structure, it’s been there for close to 100 years, it was established in, what, 1867, before the current structure was there, and it’s worth saying, so please do whatever you can in that regard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No one else?
Good evening, my name is Helen Heckman, I live in Newton, and I too am here to say thank you for reconsidering the plan for the Dennis Library renovation, and I’m grateful that you’re putting more time and effort into, and doing your due diligence, and trying to make it work. I think that’s great. I did, however, in my research today, come across the original plan, the rendering of the original plan, I’m sure you’re all familiar with it, I don’t know that anyone else here is familiar with it, but it’s a wonderful rendering, and that the library at the cost of 6-point-something million dollars would have been fabulous, and I, when I look at this and I think of the possibility of scaling it back, that gives me pause. I, you know, I’m hoping that we can do something with it, that we can save the project, but the idea that we’re not going to get what we originally had hoped is disappointing to me. So, but there are many other people here that wish to share their feelings about this particular project. So I thank you for reconsidering, and I hope that the right thing happens. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bruce Whipple, I’ve been a resident of Andover Township over 40 years, and I was 13 years an educator in Andover Township, and in the tenure while I was there, I watched my industrial arts program, the home economics program, and the library basically boxed up and thrown out, and well-meaning board members sat by while administrators dismantled this. It seems unconscionable that it happens in these schools, but I’d hate to see it happen again at this county. We don’t believe that it can happen, and then all of a sudden, there’s no money, and then there’s no project, and there’s no going back. We’ve seen that mistake happen before, and I just hope it doesn’t happen again here, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, Lisa Carlson, Lafayette, some of you know me. My concern is also with the library. If for some reason the project does not go through, what is the Commissioner’s plan for at least making the building ADA compliant? Because it is not, and as a public building, it has to be. You cannot deny those who cannot access it as a public building, so it at least needs to be ADA compliant. You have a senior citizen housing literally down the street from the library, half of those residents cannot access that library, because they can’t get in. Once you have certain people who can get in, there’s great storytime and all kinds of things for little kids, moms can’t get in with a stroller, moms can’t go up the stairs holding an infant carrier, because it’s inaccessible to them. So at the very least, the building needs to be ADA compliant, and hopefully that happens soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is about a Resolution Z, where we’re talking about the black box, they’re talking about this with the mileage charge. As far as I know, if you buy an EV, electric vehicle in New Jersey, you don’t pay sales taxes, so maybe you could have, come up with another resolution that to restore charging a sales tax to people who buy these vehicles, and have that money dedicated to the Transportation Trust Fund, rather than, because apparently the state doesn’t need the money, they’re willing to give these people a rate, a sales tax. So if you have another resolution that says, okay, let’s restore sales tax on electric vehicles, but that money goes to the Transportation Trust Fund. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to beat you. Good evening, as you know, I’m the one accused of being publicly grandstanding, but I’d just like to say, after last meeting I was here, I personally like to thank Mr. Steinhardt for our conversation, I really appreciate it, and I’m going to go back to the letter that I had sent to Jeff Parrot’s office regarding the polls for the election. Not sure whether you guys all got a copy of that letter, I don’t think my questions were addressed, I’ll be writing another letter, I don’t think the answers were addressed, everything kind of hinged on Daniel’s law, and as you all know, every county has Daniel’s law, it’s not only a Sussex County thing, so we’ll be addressing that, and I’d like to thank you for acknowledging that you got my email and at least reached out to Jeff Parrot. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have come.
Speak louder, please. Speak louder.
Sure. Teacher voice, okay. Mary Fox, Andover Township, I have come to several meetings, and so you know how I feel about the Dennis Library. I’m grateful that you are revisiting it, and I’m very, very hopeful that you will come up with a plan that’s appropriate, that makes our library as beautiful as I really want it to be, so please, please do this for those people who need access and can’t get in there right now. I was subbing the other day in a school where one of the teachers said that her mother brought her twin sons for a summer program, and it was almost impossible to get these two-year-old little boys up the stairs, but once they got up there, they thoroughly enjoyed the program, so please make every effort to make sure that this happens for Sussex County, for the town of Newton, for my former students, for children who love to come and use the library, and for adults who really need to be able to get in there without coming to any harm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Bill Sparling from Newton. I’ve asked the Commissioners, have anyone addressed the mold issue as a prosecutor’s office? I know it’s been brought up before, just wondering if there’s.
I’m sorry, I didn’t even get that, can you just?
The mold issue.
The mold issue, oh, okay. I’m sorry, I didn’t.
Just wondering if anything has been addressed on that matter, and missed a few of you at the event held at the Mineral Hotel. It was a great event, and it was for the families and children. It was hosted by Joe Lababera, who was our chairperson of the Sussex County Republican Party, and it was a gathering to recognize the people that are fighting for parental rights and for the children, and there was a good turnout, but it’s a shame that all of you couldn’t make it. I know there’s always things that come up, but if there’s another event like that, it would be great to see you all there. This is for our kids, and we’re going to show up, we’re going to take action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, they’re not expecting me to speak, so go ahead.
So, good evening, my name, is this working?
No, it picks up for the recording.
Okay. My name is Julie McCarthy, I am resident of Hamburg, a partisan township. I am a former librarian, Sussex County Library, I worked at Dorothy Henry in Vernon for nine years, and then I was the coordinator of the branches for three years. So as the coordinator of the branches, I’m very familiar with all of the branches, including Dennis, which was always difficult, but always beautiful. So I spent some time today writing out all the things that libraries do and why they’re important, but I think you probably know a lot of that. There’s talk about story hours, but the story hours at Dennis include sensory, special sensory story hours for children with special needs, reading with a dog for children who have reading difficulties, and many other programs for adults, teens, and the library could really reach out even more and bring more people in if people could get in easily. Libraries are just so important to a community. There was a study in Philadelphia that houses a quarter of a mile from a library were worth so much more in taxes to the town than homes right away. You know, I don’t know if that’s an equivalent here in Sussex County, but it does speak to the fact that a library is a cultural center, a community center. They do so much more than lending books, although as a reader, a lifelong librarian, I think that’s wonderful. They just provide help for tax filing, for job applications, or just as a place to be, a community center that’s free and welcome. So, you probably feel this way about libraries too, and the issue here is making this library, making this library accessible for all those wonderful things. And just two other things. It's a beautiful, beautiful building worth restoring in this historic area. And also the community colleges here in the town with a new building, a stone's throw, they're using the McGuire Building now for their programs. The interaction between the community college and the library could be so fruitful, they can support this educational, cultural mission. So I know money's difficult. I understand the problem. Thank you for reconsidering it, but it's worth working towards. It's worth keeping and I hope that you will do that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Colleen Wright, Newton, New Jersey. The Dennis Library was a gift to our county. And as my grandmother used to say, you don't look a gift horse in the mountain. It is something we need to be grateful for and we need to continue to consider it as a gift for our generation and generations to come. Newton is a walking district. I'm one of seven from my family. We grew up here on Trinity Street. We all walked to the library. We walked to school, we walked to church, we walked uptown businesses, we walked to the pool, I walked to the meeting here tonight. It is a walking community and the library is so important for the enrichment of not only children, but adults. I used to get my grandmother books there. It was not accessible to her because she couldn't walk. And when she couldn't read, we read to her. It is so vital to the lifeblood. It is a cultural heritage that we are entitled to as a gift. And I just pray with all my heart that you find a way to continue. And the last note is, my brother Kevin was a local historian. And if anyone needs to know the historical background of the Dennis Library, if you Google it, you will find his article. And it's quite succinct and quite beautifully written. And he learned a lot of what he knew at the Dennis Library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teri Ann Zander, Andover, New Jersey. I'm new to the commissioners' meeting room. I learned a lot tonight. I learned about mosquitoes. I might call and have my pond looked at because I don't want it to become a pool and infect my entire neighborhood with disease. I don't know what Daniel's law is, but I think it sounds important and I might want to find out about that and if someone could inform me, that would be helpful. I also learned a little bit about the, the need to bring in more agritourism into the community. The one thing that disturbs me, and I was moved to write a letter to the commissioners back in June, was about the Dennis Library. I do a lot of work with libraries in another community as a consultant and they have struggled for years to improve upon their library as well. The one thing that's most disturbing to me is the fact that in this day and age, that the building is not ADA compliant. I think of what could happen if someone brought a litigious suit against the library because they would have their right to do so, not having access to the facility. And what would happen if someone were to become injured and/or file a claim against the library and the town? So I encourage the library discussion to continue and to find a way to make it happen. I, I don't go to the library as often as I should. I spend more time at my client, the library in Paramus. And somebody just mentioned the community. Libraries are community centers, places to come together, to learn, to grow, and to thrive. And it's kind of sad to see that it's kind of, the monies that have been allocated and the things that have happened, and it's been put on the back burner, hoping it comes to the front burner and the community again can feel proud about the history and what the library does for the community. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Is there any, go ahead. No, I would like to hear what you have all said, but you have shared some of that with me, so that would be fabulous. Thanks.
Hi. My name is Dorothy Decker. I live in Hardeston. I have lived in the county for 66 of my 76 years. I moved here when I was 10 years old and I lived opposite the Franklin neighborhood house. I don't know if anybody recalls that.
I guess so.
Yes. And it was a, an open sesame and it was like wonderful, it was great. And I even worked there when I was in high school, in the summer, spending the place. Later on in life, I went, well, earlier I went on the bookmobile and I had interchange with Dorothy Henry. I remember Mary Leavitt Van. I remember a lot of librarians that passed through. And it was just a big part of my life growing up. And later on, I went to college and I wanted to be a library assistant. And if my husband hadn't been, uh, he got drafted out of McAfee, we lived in McAfee, and he went to Vietnam and he was wounded. There was an era in my life where I just couldn't think about going back to school. But libraries were always part of my life. When we finally moved back to Newton and he worked for the telephone company, and I had a telephone company for 38 years. And we lived on Hicks Avenue and I would take my baby in the stroller and we would go to Dennis Library. Okay, so that was one part. And then later on, I remember going to the bank in Sussex where the one branch of the library was. I went to the, the library in Sussex and I, you know, I spread out, I used all the branches that I could. And then I had the fortune that in, I think it was 1989 around that time, my husband came home from work and said, a friend of mine works, his wife works at the county library, would you be interested in a part-time job? So I did. And my first job at the library was on the bookmobile. I went to all the branches in the county. So I've had experience with all of them. And then an opening came at Dorothy Henry, which by that time we lived in Vernon and I worked there for 25 years. So I've had experience with all the branches. I've been in Dorothy Henry in the summer, working part-time, you know, to cover breaks and things like that. And it's always been such a big part of my life. And I remember approximately 25 years ago, going to a freeholders' meeting with a branch librarian's and Julie McCarthy. And we pleaded, pleaded with the freeholders at that time to establish a barcode system in the library, to make it automated, to buy computers, to give it access to a lot of people who couldn't afford computers at home. And the library has capitalized on that. I think it's been a success. I think there's a lot of programs that could be expanded even further.
Sorry, can you tie this up?
Okay. Anyway, but that's my story. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stevie Fava from Green. One of the things I wish you'd consider is how much that library is used and how much more it would be used if people could get in it. I've never been in that library when it's empty. There are always people at the computers and not everybody in Newton has their own computer. There are always little people in the children's area. I love seeing them come out with their bags, with the books they've chosen. It's a part of our community. We need to invest in it. It's a positive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your sharing your stories about the Vernon Library. I was the library.
Please say your name and municipality, please.
Wendy Whipple, Andover Township. Thanks for the stories about the Vernon Library. I was the branch coordinator when that building was built. So it's great to see it. I want to say thank you very much. I listened to your statement about how you met already and you are looking into possible alternatives for the Dennis Library. As a retired librarian, I never stopped researching and one of the best ways to do that was to call the state librarian today. I had a conversation with Jen Nelson, who is the state librarian, concerning the amendments to the Library Construction Bond Act. I'd like to ask the clerk if she can pass these out.
Thank you.
I have highlighted some sections there that I think you might want to take a look at, but for those folks who don't have the document in front of them, basically what she said is that effective on Monday, October 2nd, these amendments will be approved. And some of the things that are there that are important for us in the county to know include that the state librarian can now approve any change orders that we may have that does not have to go before this entire state legislature. So that's a very good, a good thing for us. And what it also means is that the county of Sussex is not on the hook for $10 to $11 million. We know there are other issues within the county's buildings and we know with that in mind, the county can approve an amended plan with the help of the county library director. They can honor their commitment to accept the Dennis Library building. They can also honor their commitment to provide $3.5 million from the rainy day fund of the sale of the homestead. They could, we could come up with a plan for the total of the seven, six to seven million dollars that should accomplish many of the things people have, have mentioned here tonight. So it is not, we have to give the grant away because we can't afford the project cost. There's a section in there under social impact. It talks about the changes in the per square footage prices that will reflect the changes post-COVID. The state librarian said that these changes were devoted to help counties such as ours to come up with plans that will work, that have to do with their current economy. She said that libraries should keep their eyes on the prize and focus on how patron services will be improved when these new services are offered. They are not looking to take money back. They are not nitpicking about the grant. They want to work with the county and they want to make the project work for the county. She stated that the state library needs to be flexible, especially in times of COVID and inflation. I thank you. And by the way, if you are here in support of the Dennis Library, would you please stand up? Thank you very much.
This is coming out. This is coming out. Yeah, October 2nd, this is what Whipple's talking about. Mrs., Mrs. Whipple. Mrs. Whipple. So this is coming out the 2nd, you say? October 2nd?
They will be, that form is already there. The changes in the amendments in the original grant will be active on Monday morning, October 2nd.
This is the first time we're seeing this. I was just curious.
I'm sure the attorney has, has already seen.
I'm aware of it. Have you, you saw this?
Because we, he referenced it our last meeting.
Oh, okay.
So I figured I would just show that too, but he, he's voluble because we referenced it the last.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And thank you again for your professionalism and for your congeniality in us trying all to work for the good of Sussex County. So thank you, we've appreciated the dialogue.
Thank you.
My name is Dennis Stinkels, from Hampton Township. I'd just like to say that I agree with everything she just said. It was something I noticed in your agenda, being from Hampton Township. You plan to close the bridge going across the Pollenskill Lake, Parsons Road.
Which one is it? G, you said?
U.
U.
Top of the page. What was I, you know, both kind of bridge? Is there a reason for that? I mean, you don't close them just for the fun of it, but.
No, that's. The authority administrator. Well, yeah, if you, I'll tell you what you can do. You could either email me or administrator and I can get you more information on that.
Okay, that's fine. I was just wondering if it's going to be closed for how long?
Yeah, I'll get, and that way, yeah.
It is an access route.
It's an engineering project for sure. Yeah, I'll either take care of it myself or you can always email Bill Copanola, our county engineer. If you go to his website, you can email him there. For some reason, you don't get an answer from him. You email me.
See if you're getting them.
Thanks.
And then the second thing was.
Guys, guys, please.
Regarding the county jail.
Yes.
And I assume the county jail doesn't have as many occupants now because of the failed Form Act?
Sure.
Okay. What happens when you, if you need a jail? I know you shipped them down to Morris Town or Morris County. What would, I mean, what would, I'm just asking the question, what would happen if you ever needed a jail, since you just sold? And thirdly, isn't it possible just to keep the antenna on top and deed it to the county and say, that's it? You know, it's like the World Trade Center has an antenna on top of their thing and I'm sure if it changes ownership, it's still, you know, that could still be deeded to the county. I just want you to consider that. It saves some money there.
One minute.
Again, I'm not going to answer those questions, but, but, but I'm not saying I'm never going to answer it. I, I take that back. If you want to email me, I can give you some more information.
Very good.
Or you can call me, we'll have a conversation.
Very good.
This is just for public comments and I want to keep it that way. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We can, I can address that for you.
Thank you for.
All right, you have it. You get the day. Is there anyone else before we close?
Can you ask questions?
This is public comment. On non-agenda, I have to say. Anyone coming once? Okay. Motion to close the floor for public comment, return to regular business.
Submit.
Mr. Fantasia, have a second. Commissioner Hayden, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries.
Yeah, just briefly, a couple things. In response to Ms. Zander, I, I heard her say she's a library consultant, so I'm sure she's aware of the fact that if that's so, then you would know, you might be aware that the, the non-ADA compliant portions of the library are grandfathered in. That's number one. Number two, it's not a county.
You can speak up.
Sure. The, the, the non-ADA portions of the library are actually grandfathered in, but beyond that, it's not a county building yet, so the county is not in a position to actually make those improvements, although that it is part of what's being considered as part of the overall plan for improving the library. Anybody, the commissioners have any comments?
Did you have something on the, I know you want to answer, I think, Doreen's question?
Yes, there was just two things. For general information, and I have not given a tick report for years now, for the past five years, we've discussed why the state of New Jersey does not fund ticks the same way that they fund tick-borne illness, the same way that they would fund mosquitoes. Now lanternfly, the grant that we got for $25,000 for lanternflies. One good thing that our county has done though is when you go to the different days, I know at Vernon Day and those different things, there were actually tick information and tick collection kits that were sent out that you can actually capture the tick to send it for the testing and also removal for humans and removal for our furry friends as well. So at least that was an investment that was made. There's a long way to go and that's something, again, that I think is a Trenton issue that would happen, but it's not for lack of the county saying that we do recognize that, you know, tick-borne illness is, is very, very serious. Another thing to mention, just for the general sake of the public, as part of our ARPA funds, there is a mobile library now that will be traveling to Montague, those regions up there and some of the outermost areas where people don't necessarily have access. I know it's not the same as a standalone library that they are able to get to, but there is, as part of ARPA, the library did present a proposal to us for a mobile, you know, a mobile library, and that was approved by the commissioner board. So just for the sake, I know a lot of people are here, you know, interested in the library and I'm sure if you weren't here at the meeting, you weren't aware that that's something that, that we did approve last. Again, this isn't a Q and A kind of situation, but I do think it's very, very important that I quantify something that was said in public session. I've used the word grandstanding exactly twice since we've been here and the public is always welcome to come and say anything, make any comments. If you're aware, I was the director and deputy director during the COVID crisis and there was a lot of angst, a lot of things that happened during that time. And believe me, I have a thick skin. What I don't have, and as our attorney has also shared, is I don't have patience for proxy or campaigning for office here up at the podium. This is meant for public session and, you know, when I say grandstanding, grandstanding was directly aimed at one person and that person was not you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I just want to reiterate, this is for public comment. We open to the floor to the public, but we, we have an open door policy and as long as, as I said.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, adjourn. 7:12.
Yes, sir. I want to.